Yes. Are they here?
No, no, no.
I don't even see it. It doesn't look like you guys even know.
I'd like to call to order disconnect the City Council Committee meeting for Monday, September 16th, 2024. And the first thing on our agenda, we're going to have a presentation by Mr. Lefond on the survey that we should have done in the mail regarding the water. Mr. Lefond?
Lead Service?
He brought socks on? He brought...
We're not playing hard. A few weeks back, we did contract with the company through a grant to send surveys out to property owners within the city to meet regulations from EPA in regard to lead and copper. That new rule is to ban all lead services in 1986, all lead containing, solder containing lead. It was all banned in 1986. Now there is a push to do surveys of all the properties within the city of New York State, actually the whole country, to see which services are still lead. And then the next phase of that would be how to remove them. So most property owners would have gotten these. It was the best way to do it. Some property owners would get them through their service for Astro from their banks. They'll be on the website, hopefully with a two-day assurance connectity. People who don't know, there is a way to test. One, lead, which is this year, part of the boost neck, magnet, almost take the lead. Okay? That's what they're trying to remove. The city allows copper, one-inch copper. And we do allow CPS pipe, which is plastic. Most people now are going with the CPS pipe because it's a fraction of the cost compared to the coppers nowadays. I think a six-year eighty-foot roll of coppers is almost a thousand dollars, and a hundred feet of plastic is about a hundred twenty dollars. So residents can go with plastic, and the only thing they have to do is if they're currently grounded through their electrical panel to the pipe that's in the ground, it has to remain grounded. If not, they have to call an electrician, have an electrical permit, put two grounding rods into the electrical inspector's office to ground the new service or their house. What EPA does after the surveys are out, it'll be a work in progress because we don't get into, we're not going to get into sixteen thousand houses in the next few months, but it'll be a work in progress. And once that's done, that survey has to be posted on the website in the EPA format so anybody can access it and look up a property and see if it still has a lead service or copper service. So I do want to come in and just inform you that these are out, so if people do contact you, please try and get them to either contact the Water Department, send a self-card in to 120 Water, or if they want to do the self-test. Like I said, we'll schedule a appointment with them to actually go up to the house and determine whether it's lead or copper. You know, it's very difficult getting in people's basement if nobody wants to in their house. I'm not there to look at anything other than the pipe. So I don't know if the council has any questions. If you do, these are out there, these surveys now.
So if someone has a lead pipe, they have to get replaced?
No. If they touch the water service, like currently right now, if they have to do any work on their water service, it is lead, they have to bring it to code. But if it's currently in the ground, until EPA tells us it has to be removed, currently who's going to pay for it? Because the city doesn't own services. We own the mains. Property owns the service from the main into the house, so it's not been determined yet. Right now, they're just doing the survey.
So my, who's going to pay for it was kind of my other question. Sometimes lower-income homeowners have grants available, so is that anything that's going to...
We had a grant a few years back for around five hundred and sixty thousand. We did about a hundred service lines to people who knew the grant was available. They had a leaded service. The licensed plumber in the city contacted our plumbing inspector, verified that it was lead. If it was lead, that property owner received the service, free jurisdiction, the grant. So hopefully EPA, the federal government, will come up with money because it's, you know, it's millions of dollars. We have sixteen thousand properties. This would affect almost any house that was built pre-86, because that was when the rule came into effect. So the assumption is if your house was built before 1986, it probably has a lead, unless it was a replaced service because it already was bad and you replaced it with copper.
Any other questions, Ms. Patrick?
Just two quick questions. When do the surveys do that?
I told you, this year, we'll have, hopefully, the surveys back in or a portion of them.
Okay.
The company we have working with us will put the data into the EPA format. It'll be sent to EPA, and we'll just continue working to gain and treat more and more houses.
Is the ser-, I know you said that the results will go on our website. Is the survey instrument itself on our website?
Not yet.
Okay.
No. And surveys, it's got to be developed in the sense that data is going to be put in, and 120 Water is knowing that.
Okay.
And we're getting, and we're keeping all this downstairs. The Water Department personnel scheduling appointments to go up to residents who do call in and just, you know, want somebody other than themselves to verify what they have on with the house.
Thank you.
If it's an unknown, EPA considers it a leaded service. We say unknown, it's going to be considered leaded.
Anybody else?
Paul, you mentioned about costs, and EPA is not discussing that at this point in time. The EPA is not discussing costs or who's going to go over the cost at this point in time? Is that something that you can try to find out from them as to who is going to be responsible for the cost?
I, we can look into it, but I think what they're trying to figure out right now is, you know, it's maybe a lot of your sixteen thousand services, you know, where you say fifteen percent maybe, you know, lead still? We're not sure. So we didn't go, we're going through our data, which are old tapping cards, to help update everything. So it's, it's a process, you know? We're just trying to find tapping guards from the seventies or eighties, you know, we grew up in the archives in the attic. So one of the easiest ways to actually get into a basement, you look at the pipe, scratch the pipe, see if it's lead, see if it's copper, see if it's plastic.
Other questions? You didn't have the really copy of the survey.
I didn't get one mailed to me. I have a paper copy. I can, what I'll do is email it out. I can email it to all the owners, and I can email the most free...
Oh, this one, this one.
You've got a card in your house.
Just so people can see what it is and know it's not junk mail?
They add some...
So it kind of looks like this, where it says, and so if they scan this QR code?
Yep, they scan the QR code, they get responded to through this QR code.
Okay. So, all right, and then just the other side. Well, that just says residents of this amount. Oh, no, it's residents there. Okay. So if people get things in the mail, it's not junk mail, they just complete the surveys.
Anything they want, they only get these calls down through room nine, and we'll send appointments.
Okay. Any other thing, questions? Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thanks for bringing the props.
We will do it next meeting.
Thank you.
All right, we'll begin with public safety.
So I'd like to call the Public Safety Committee's order. We have three items on the agenda tonight, first of which is a discussion on traffic safety measures within this case, frankly, Mr. Patrick?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Williams. I'd like to ask Mr. Wallin to come back to the front.
I brought ten copies, but nobody's here.
We're here.
This is a continuation of a discussion that we've been having about traffic safety and traffic calming measures.
Thank you for bringing them.
Hello. So, September 16th, traffic update. Both of me here by a little doohickey. I apologize, it does TV seem to always be on first. All right. So the first thing that we wanted to talk about, this is going to be, when I do these updates, we're going to kind of go a little bit of agenda, but also a little bit of where we have to go. So one of the first things that we talked about is to put these into place officially. What we'd like to do is in talking with the Corporate Counsel's Office, is modify the city code to authorize a city engineer, as it states, to have a section, a new section, which we're calling traffic calming measures, which authorizes a city engineer to install traffic calming measures on designated streets, as it's written there. It is, of course, totally changed. This was a draft that was put together, but it is the idea that it authorizes myself, with your permission, to install things that we talked about at the previous update, which is speed bumps, pumps, red light cameras, school zones, speed cameras. We could even put a little bit of, you know, and similar devices in there just so we're not coming back for every little thing. This is something that will require a public hearing, I believe, because we may amend the city code. So if this is what we'd like to go forward with, I think this would be the top priority, to get it into the public hearing process, to move forward so that we could do that. And I provided the language in your, in your handout there. Just moving on, if we're going to be doing this and calling a public hearing about my roles, one of the things that has come up is I'd also like, I didn't even talk to Sean about this, I'd also like to amend this section of my duties, which has to do with use of streets and sidewalks. What we did was, and I'm sure you're kind of aware, is we've transitioned a lot of enforcement to codes, and we've unified all the enforcement in the Codes Department. However, we never changed the charter, as is customary. We don't really update the charter as quickly as we should. And so the charter says that it's the Commissioner of Public Works, Paul, or the Assistant City Engineer, who does not exist. The Assistant City Engineer was a PE position, and I don't believe it's existed for about 20 years. And those are the two people that shall serve notice to people for sidewalk violations. So, you know, we have sidewalk violations that do occur from time to time, so I am requesting that this be changed to Commissioner Public Works, City Engineer, or the Codes Department, so that we can have the Codes officers write this as part of their duties. So while it's not part of the traffic safety in a way, if we're going to call a public hearing and discuss the duties of the city engineer, I would love to be able to modify this so it's cleaner. So, so these were the first two things that we, that I wanted to talk about was the modification of speed codes, city attempt order. The second thing that I wanted to talk with you about today would be the speed table procedure. It was something that we provided before with the City of Rochester. I modified it just a little bit, simplified some areas of it. There you go, Sam. And I'd like to get the committee's comments on it. I do think that it may be appropriate, I don't, you know, we don't do it much, but to meet actually with the committee possibly, to not turn these council meetings into workshops. I don't know how we do that, but, you know, there's decisions that have to be made before we move forward with a lot of these items, and I don't know if this is the right venue to have these kind of workshop discussions.
So, so, you know, since we've been having these kind of things, there's been committee meetings being held?
Okay, terrific. So what you have in front of you is a speed table procedure. I'm summarizing it up top where we're saying that, you know, there'd be five steps. This is identical to Rochester, just modified for the City's connectity, where you're talking about a letter of request, in-house evaluation, traffic study, and then the consideration of other factors. The highlighted portion is where I'd just like to go, is that they use a seventy-five percent petition. We don't have a petition that is that high, so then I would ask that the council come up with a number that is, you know, it could be seventy-five percent, it could be fifty, it could be eighty, but I just want to make sure that that number I would like the council to be able to set. Similarly, on the bottom, on section six, there's a section about parallel streets, and if you kind of were to read this whole thing and gloss over it, it's one of those little worded sections that could be a nightmare. So I will like direct you to where I grew up. I grew up on Arzley Road, which is right by the high school. Arzley Road is a great example road that I just happened to grow up on, because Arzley Road is, if you're at the high school, the parking lot is literally empties on Arzley Road, and you have Union Street. So cars drive that way. So if you get a petition from Arzley Road and they say, "We really want speed pumps", then we put them there. Waverly and Phoenix, directly parallel, right next door. So then you start pushing, then you get to McClone, then you get to Parkwood, you get to Glenwood. And Rochester actually, you know, really, they kind of, they had stronger language. It was essentially if there are more than one parallel street, you're denying them. They don't even want to get into it. And I don't want to go down that road yet because this is a new process, but I wanted to point out that on those particular streets, the other streets I was thinking about are neighborhoods such as Woodlawn, where if you go into Woodlawn, we have very long straight runs of roads, where if we put them there, particularly there's the four, I don't remember off the top of my head, but there's four roads that go right through from Albany Street to the Woodlawn Preserve that are just long straight runs. So if we put speed pumps on one of them, are we forcing on to the others? Differ, yeah. It's that, it's that level of just making sure we have the understanding that we don't want to solve a problem on one street, but push the problem to the others. So, and with regards to this, that's why, you know, Brian's here, Cannon, because we've been working, he's been using the data from the city's smart city nodes and optical sensors and working with our vendors. He's pulled some data, he's actually shared it with myself and the Police Department. I don't want to make it public yet because we're still working out some of the kinks on what we really believe is feasible and not feasible, but that could be maybe the next update. This one, I want to show you that I'd love to get the code moving, get this kind of going with this procedure so that we know what we're doing, and then we can focus on where the actual tables themselves are going. The next part of that, as I say tables, I just wanted to bring this up. We've been doing a lot of research on this, and, you know, we're not the first. So because we're not the first, I'm not acting like we're inventing anything here, we're just implementing it. So the table that we put on Duane Avenue in Connectity was what is called a speed table on the left. You go up, it's flat for a little bit, and you go down. There are speed pumps. What Albany has are speed pumps, up-down. So one is twelve feet, one is thirty feet, or twenty-six feet depending. So we have these two different, so if you were to go to Albany, they have pumps, we use the table. The tables are better for really high-volume roads. One of the differences, I think the main difference, and I don't want to, you know, I know you're probably going to say, Chris, whatever you'd like to do, but I just want to talk and tell you what it is, is that the idea with Duane Avenue was, we don't need to reduce the speed, we just don't want you speeding. So with speed hump, you will drive, and it'll have a sign that will say, "Speed hump, fifteen miles an hour. You got to slow down to fifteen, go over a speed hump, and then keep driving." The speed tables, we've specifically designed and picked that they're meant for thirty miles an hour. You drive thirty miles an hour, you go up, you go over, you go down. If you go forty miles an hour, it's going to be really uncomfortable. So that was the idea. The thought was, and this is where I said, working with the PD, working with John Fuglio at the time, was that if you had a speed hump and you reduced that speed to fifteen, you would want to make it up. You would want to go up, over, okay, that was annoying, I got to go fast. And then up, up, over, and I'm going to make it up. We didn't get that complaint with these speed tables. I don't remember hearing that about the going fast portion of it, but I did want to point out that the majority of locations are using pumps, which are a little bit smaller, more manageable, tables. But I haven't decided which way I really want to go, but I just wanted to state that is the reason. If we do use speed pumps, most likely even at twenty-five miles an hour, we will have to put an advisory sign that the speed over that hump is twenty or fifteen. So we have to reduce the speed over the hump. Table, we wouldn't have. Also, we have some standard geeks, just to let you know, this is, you know, what a speed table would look like, this is off the DOT, so this is what kind of we're working on. We're not trying to reinvent the wheel. Similarly, signage, this is what I'm going to be forwarding to Paul, Lefond, and Brian about. This is what we're thinking is that, like, right now, this is if we were to use a speed table, we would, we would put what the speed limit is, because we're not going to have speed limit signs on every road once we go through this, you know, hopefully the lower end of the speed limit. So we would say, "Head speed limit's twenty-five. There's a speed table ahead. Here's the speed table." That would be the procedure of advanced warning. And then the, as you see on the road, they use a very unique now system of striping, where it's, it's like a three-foot wide stripe, then you go thirty feet, and it's a five-foot wide stripe, and you go thirty feet, and it goes, and then when you get to the speed table, it's narrow. So it's a, it's a very distinct amount of striping to get to that point. So right now, this is what we were calling our signage and striping package that we will be working with, with Brian and SPD to implement. If this is, this is specific to a speed table. I didn't have time to put one together for a speed hump. The only difference would be that white speed limit sign would be a little yellow sign that would be saying probably twenty or fifteen, because you'd have to slow down. So...
So if, let's say, this is with the speed table, so if it was a speed hump, are you saying you would need the twenty-five mile an hour, in addition to that, you would need an additional sign writing around the speed hump?
We would.
For the fifteen?
So we would put, it's a little misleading, because those signs aren't meant to actually be above and above each other, they're just meant to show ones here, ones further back. The advisory sign would be directly attached and beneath that speed table ahead sign to advise you that you have to go slower over it. The only difference would be most likely is that we would automatically put a speed limit sign on the other side, just to, you know, this is what the speed limit is, just to remind you what the speed limit is. But the, the speed pumps, the advantage of the speed hump is it would probably be cheaper because they're smaller. But I just, I'm, like you said, I try to deal in transparency, and we did not install speed pumps on Duane Avenue. We used specifically designed speed tables for our speed limit, which was at the time thirty, so it would work perfectly fine with twenty-five, and those are the comments that we got with for a speed table. But I have the entire Albany, City of Albany plan set. I have their procedures. Albany has a similar procedure that they have adopted by the council. I'm pretty sure I could share, I wasn't comfortable sharing it now, but I'm pretty sure it's all public to share. That's what they developed, and they're using pumps in their project in Hamlet Village.
So in terms of, we only did one, that one street?
Correct.
That's the only feedback we got was from that one street? And so all the other places that we talked about, people felt, you know, were giving the feedback on?
Yeah, the next one was supposed to be rugby, and we didn't do that.
So we haven't gotten any of that feedback, so we're basing everything just on that one?
Right now, yes. Well, I'm not only basing off of that, but that's why I'm trying to use the Albany study and some other areas to try to pull in information on just what people were doing. But yes, for our local, we've only used that system once on that road. Inspector?
So I have a couple of questions. So just on that one still, so that does make the assumption, I think, that we would lower the speed limit to twenty-five?
That this is all off, that's why I put it there, that we are going to be lowering the speed limit on local roads to twenty-five. Yes.
Okay. It's based on that?
Okay, great. I'm happy to hear that. And then on the sidewalk, I thought, and this did happen before I was on council, but I'm pretty, I thought that we had to have a petition, and that that too was, I thought the number was seventy-five percent, but, because that, that language isn't in here about having a petition.
I think the city charter still stands at twenty-five percent.
Twenty-five percent. So if, if residents on the street had twenty-five percent of residents, so shouldn't that be in, we're putting it in for the speed tables, shouldn't we be putting it into?
That's, you know, it's a different, if I can interject, that's kind of a different process. You're looking at something of a fluid situation, whereas if you're talking about improvement districts, that goes with property taxes, and that's in the city charter, which is a totally different element.
Oh, I see, okay. I get the distinction.
Okay, so it's, it's...
Okay. Thank you. And I just, I do think that it would be great to have a special, you know, if we needed to talk about support, to have a special public safety committee meeting as we did the other day, so I just wanted to bring that coming as well.
Any other questions, your conference, Mr. Rivera?
Mr. Wallin, sometime back we'd asked, you should kind of give us a cost breakdown for these speed table or speed hump. Were you able to get a cost?
For how much one would be?
Yes.
No, I didn't put anything together yet, no. The signage, we would most likely be able to do in-house, do you think, practically? We're not talking about too many signs.
Yes.
Yeah, we're working at two, four, six signs, posts, and then the, the black notices you see there, those are delineators, just so in case. I just threw those in there. Each side of it, just for plow purposes, that's something you do, you put, you know, this where the front and the back of them would be, so the plows know where they are. That's what those are. The speed tables themselves are asphalt, they're not very large. I mean, I can get a, I can get a pretty accurate quote from one of our vendors, but twenty-five to fifty thousand dollars for, for one, I don't think it would be, you know, two, two cost prohibitive for putting one in. Maybe we do it, we pave some of the road, and that can be, you know, absorbed into that and get a little bit more efficiencies out of it if we pave the road at the same time.
So on the removals, on the removals, we, that we purchased last year, sixty thousand dollars for the wall?
Sixteen?
Oh, speaking of, I thought they're not permanent.
It's not permanent, but that's like, when we put on, we have sixteen.
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 Just, just, so, Mr. Wallin, our budget is ended this month. Is it possible for you to consider maybe to put that in your capital budget?
So what I have in my capital budget going for next year, I have a meeting with Anthony, but usually what I request is somewhere around a million and a half, two and a half million dollars for general paving, which is above and beyond what the state gives us, and in that, we usually leave it open, and we call it, it used to be called road paving program, now we call it the street improvement program, and we leave the bond language a little bit more open, so that this would be under that program. So that's how we would be doing things.
And you, can you create a separate line for speed tables, speed hump, and allocate money?
Just so it's budgeted?
Yes.
Just so you see it?
Yes.
I could ask Anthony to do that, yes, for, yeah, it would be a smaller one, yes.
Okay. And you would just be doing that based on estimates at this point in time?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yeah. Oh, I just want to logistically go through this if I can right now. If you all want to, I provided the draft ordinance to you, which is incorporated in slide number two. If you want to go with that, you would have to have a public hearing. Now, the public hearing would either be, you know, the same night you're doing the public hearing for the budget in October, or putting it out for the second meeting in, in October. And then regarding the, the language and then the, the speed table request procedure, what you do is, after you have your public hearing, go down the ordinance, that same night, you could do a resolution endorsing the policy, whatever you may agree to, because section two of that ordinance will, has the process where you're agreeing or inputting on the, on the guidance issued by the city engineer. So logistically, you know, for thinking ahead here, it's, I mean, it's up to you what you'll want to do. Public hearing, because of the way the schedule is, it's not going to be until the, the public hearing for the budget. You may want to think about putting it off to the end of October, because you'll have a full plenum sure on that night for the budget. So we could do, you know, if you want this language, we could do, you know, pass out tonight the resolution calling for a public hearing, but the public hearing would be at that second meeting in, in October.
So, yeah, I was just wondering about, it's like, I know that you're saying that we have a pretty limited data set, just because we only use that on doing admin, but don't we have some data from like our smart city stuff, or some of the other kind of traffic centers we've been doing, collecting data around like street rent, is that, is any of that data, would that be applicable to this, or we can say, okay, this looks like?
We have data, but that's what I was, is, is Brian, myself, and the, and the Police Department are using that data to identify areas that would be best probable areas to put these systems. But it wouldn't help us with them, because we don't have anything like this out there. Duane Avenue was very unique, and like I said, we just used, yes, it was that one case study to move forward, and we can identify it was a... we can identify it was, but no, I don't think, I don't think the data that we have today, we could use to justify, you know, the success of one of these because we don't have anything out there. This, these are, these are different kinds of systems. These are, they're, they're very unique to have on a public road, you know, even in the school parking lots and things like that. I don't think we could make that. Brian, do you disagree with that? I don't, no. So. Mr. Patrick?
But we do have the example of the City of Albany and the debt and all that they've been doing that we could look to?
Correct. And I worked with, I've worked with, with them quite a bit. And I also work, like I said, we're working with the Capitol Region Transportation Council, and we can work with them. I'm not, I'm not too, I'm not too concerned about if they will be effective. It's just where they will be effective and getting the policies and procedures right so that, you know, we're, we're the one kind of steering the implementation of them and how they're placed because I think it was a good study. I really do think that the way we're having the study was a good study, and we got good results in Albany. You know, they clearly saw it was good, and they're making the investment, and you're seeing this as, to combat it. And we, like I said, we're using the data to pull it together. We're looking at, it's, it's a tool. It's not the tool, but it is a tool. Just like last presentation, I said, these are all the tools that we have. And I, I think that we could start looking at the new ones that, I didn't bother talking about speed cameras or bus cameras or things like that, but all those are, are useful tools when used correctly.
Well, just, so, with the 1.5 million for paving, or I think you said, with that also, I mean, I guess I just want to make sure that we have enough money, or at least we have the ability to discuss whether we're going to have enough money, if we were going to do the cameras or, you know, any other kinds of traffic calming measures.
I, I don't know how the IT, like, traffic cameras and that, I don't know how that would work with regards to paving line.
But, I mean, so somewhere in the budget, I mean, it doesn't have to be in the paving line, but.
Yeah. Would you like to see if we could put something?
Yes.
Okay.
Please.
I just wanted to be clear, are we going to be doing, are we going to be doing what we wrote before this, you know, just over this, is there going to be a pilot over there as well? I know that was our intention. Is it still going to happen?
This year?
At all?
We can do it at all, yes. This year would be difficult.
So, the, the smart city things that we've been doing thus far, and it's kind of a similar question, but just from a different position, I'm kind of thinking about what Mr. Patrick was saying. Can, is, is any of that technology, is it applicable for us to use the data and/or maybe leverage some of that existing technology to use as far as like maybe incorporation of traffic cameras? I'm just trying to think like, is there another application to some of that smart cities money that's been spent? And can we leverage that to help within this?
I, I don't believe so at the time. If the cameras, if the cameras could detect the plates, which they may be able to detect the speed, we're not legally allowed to tick it or to send out notices, I don't believe. I mean, that was like what we're talking about. We could bind the camera is just a material item, but the, the step that we need to complete is the legislation request. It's kind of similar to what we're doing here is that, I know that it just feels completely bureaucratic and like we're not doing anything, but working with the legal office, you know, this is what we're saying, is that if we can really get the code changed, the policy form in place, and some of these details worked out, it'll set us up so that next year, because, you know, we're going into October, that next year, we're, we're ready. We're planning in the winter, we're bidding in the spring, and next year, we kind of have a plan of what we're, what our, our tactics, so that we're hitting the ground running. I mean, it's very similar to what we're talking about with the speed limit reduction. You know, so I talked with the CRTC today and Brian, and, you know, what they're doing is they're consulting Brian, sending over our signage plan. They're doing some traffic surveys, and just to reiterate, you know, that's why, what this says, 25 miles per hour, Mr. O'Brian, I have no hesitation or thought about local roads going to 25. It's the half dozen to a dozen roads that are in that, that area. So they asked, what do we want to look at? You know, and it's Broadway. What is Broadway? Broadway is the one street that goes this way. You know, knowing the geography of the city like I know what we all do, Union, Eastern, State, Albany, right? They all go that way. Broadway's the only street that goes that way. All right? So, I just like, can you look at, can you give me your opinion on Broadway? The same thing where it splits the Gilder. You know, we're looking at it from traffic, from a density, you know, a little bit of Erie Boulevard because the use of Erie Boulevard is changing, and maybe the speeds aren't high enough anyways. So, there are certain streets you're going to be looking at, but 95% of the roads, we know the recommendation is going to be they're local, they're 25. And we're also stating, if you look in your procedure, which I didn't think that, you know, you've had time to read that whole thing, is that part of that is saying, we really only want to put these traffic control devices on local roads. We, I had that in the presentation slide last time, which was the emergency routes, the arterials. We really, you don't want to go driving down State Street, and then all of a sudden, oh my God, there's a speed table. That's not, that's not appropriate. You know, we want to keep, we actually want traffic to go onto State Street. We want traffic to go onto Union Street. You know, that's one of those things, like McLoughlin Street, for example. I know that it's primarily residential, but you want the traffic on McLoughlin Street. That is the main route. You don't want the traffic to go onto Parkwood or Artisley. You want, and then, you know, the residents that are on those streets, it's, it is what it is. That is a, a more of a collector road. So you just have to, you try, that's the, that's the fear, is if you start doing, you start getting people onto that. But it's a, it's a balance that we're trying to do.
And I think that's an actual, a really good segue. My one question, or two, was related to the minimum distance for kid in the streets, that 500 feet. And then the second part is, can you talk about that makeup speed? So the one question is, 500 feet, would most of our local roads like meet that condition? And then the second is, does the length of the street have anything to do, or does it affect the, that makeup speed they're talking about with putting in humps?
All right, just wanted to make sure I'm reading, because I know what you're talking about. So you're talking about streets of less than 500, and?
So the first question was, the 500 feet?
Have a minimum distance of 500 feet between existing stop signs and traffic signals? It, it's just trying to put something where it's a short block, you don't have something you can get a 500 feet we're looking at. I believe the original one that we're opening up is closer to 800 feet, so we do, we brought it down a little bit. And that is one of the issues that we're going to see, is that's where this is really going to get a little complex, is that if we do this on a longer road, there's quite a few that we're going to start installing in the roads. You know, one of, there's a road in Colony that was one of the first to do this by a school. I can't remember, it's right off of San Creek Road, I believe, but they have speed, speed humps all the way down. And they have to be spaced appropriately so you, so you know what you're going to expect as you go. But, I'll, I'll look in, but the idea is, is that you just don't have one on a very short block.
And then a second question was, in the actual PowerPoint, I think it was the first actual slide, the Article 2 traffic regulations. I know you've talked a lot about stop signs and LED lights. Do you think that'd be an appropriate landing space for that to be included? I know we've talked about like the true definition of traffic calming measures, but I think in my head, and conceptually, of a lot of members of the community, they would see those as them also. So would you think that is appropriate to put more hat to that? Or this is already captured?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I can?
Mr. O'Brian?
Yeah, I, I think that's already captured. It's matters under the city authority, crosswalks, safety zone, traffic lanes, traffic control signals, et cetera. So those types of issues, I think, are addressed earlier, also referring to the Section 1603 of the Vehicle and Traffic Law. So those issues regarding stop signs are, are addressed earlier. I think what the, you know, Mr. Wallen was concerned about is because we're getting into a realm of traffic calming devices, which are a different entity than a stop sign, speed hump, speed, speed, traffic tables, et cetera, trap, um, school zone cameras, et cetera. That wasn't in the code, and that's why the city engineer was looking for that new section to create that, because it just didn't envision those types of devices. But the more traditional devices, the stop signs, et cetera, that's already in the, in the engineer's authority.
We did something similar to this eight years ago, where our parking sections of the code, which is also under city engineer authority, did not anticipate apps or kiosks. The, the parking code only made reference to meters and coins and tokens. So, we hadn't issued a token in, you know, about 15 years, 20 years at that point. So we, we updated the code. So this is similar here, that the traffic calming measures, and these are even phrases that weren't said when, when those, traffic calming was.
I think, I just want to say that I think one of Mr. Wallen's suggestions was adding and similar devices at the end of that first sentence, so that might put her some.
But also, you know, but not limited to.
Yeah.
I think that's, you know, these are examples.
All right, yeah.
So, as new types of devices are developed, you can always put that in there. So it's not limited, it's just those are the types of devices that will go into that section.
Yeah, I think oftentimes, specifically with like job applications, they put that add, or other duties as assigned. So I think to those around the table, and I imagine to those that you work closely with, this is common language, but just breaking it out for some people who are tuning in for the first time, although it also includes other areas as well. So unless there are any other questions or comments, I think, Mr. O'Brian, you were asking for us to?
Public hearing, public hearings. So we need to move for a public hearing?
Um, Mr. O'Brian?
Oh, yes. When Mr. O'Brian was speaking, you were asking about doing this and having the passing of the resolution on the same day. I, you know, I'm a little reluctant to do that.
You can do that, it's, it's an option. You can, it's an option.
People come to speak at public hearing, and if people come, we don't want to say, okay?
No.
It's the move ahead.
No.
So I prefer to stretch that out and.
What, let me just clarify. I mean, when you pass the ordinance, when you pass the ordinance, creating that new section, it's not a public hearing and doing that, that on the same night. What I'm saying is that you pass the, after you have the public hearing, the week transpires, goes to committee one more time. At that point, you'll be looking at the, the, the policy, the guidance, and then you'll be looking at the ordinance one last time.
Yes.
And then you can pass both out at the next time.
Okay.
What I'm saying is the resolution for the, the guidance can go at the same time when they pass the ordinance.
Okay.
Point of clarification.
Thank you.
So unless there are any other questions or further breakdowns, I have no questions.
So we're moving to call for public hearing for man chap, Section 248-11, and 228-19.
Yes.
So, have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
And next?
Are you enjoying the traffic safety presentations?
I am.
There's a new thing for me to do a presentation with.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just a point for clarification.
That would be the second meeting in October.
Yes, we're going to call for the public hearing, but we're not going to have it until the second meeting in October. Yes.
So the second item on the agenda tonight is a discussion to amend the city code chapter 182. Last week, we were able to have a special meeting, which I thought was very informational and allowed us to have a very detailed conversation about the matter. So I just wanted to snapshot what was discussed. I broke it down into three areas, enforcement, law, and council. So in enforcement, it was identified that noise complaints are a lower priority calls, which delay response times and are restricted to staffing constraints. However, there will be future discussions to expand, to incorporate drones as force responders pending statutory obligations. Areas of focus are going to be communicating noise complaint warnings during shift change, increasing education to inform offenders of potential fines, and a potential permit process, free seeking clarity on appearance tickets, and four, granting officers the ability to seize or remove noise reproducing equipment. The next area, which was law, identified that fee agreements are commonly sought out to limit the volume of trials, and increasing fee collection. And justifying attempts to enforce penalties in full will require, or was recommended, to increase penalties to support more frequent court appearances. And then the areas of focus in that area was how many fines were collected in 2024, what information is needed to charge, to file charges or penalties, advising religious or cultural ceremonies and propaganda, or potential permit processes again, and then evaluating penalties against installers. The next area, which was council, I think us, was there appeared to be an equal consensus with raising and keeping penalties at their current level. The areas of focus, identifying reviewing code and penalties against vehicles, pets, construction, and firework noise offenders, posting signage to monitor noise and talks with non-emergent police numbers, and then updating chapter 183, which is the noise ordinance, to raise point value for noise complaints. And then overall, I just wanted to thank my colleagues, the mayor, Commissioner Devine, Assistant Chief Antonovich, and Ms. Mirage for acknowledging this greater issue, a growing issue, and placing an important emphasis on educating our community. And then, and I wanted to just capture everything. Next steps were to identify chapter 183, to review the process for civilian complaints, and their needed documentation, and evaluating the penalty schedule in addition to evaluating a potential permit process moving forward. So at this time, I want to ask if there are any missed items or any further comments about the event from the comments.
The only thing, you said chapter 183 was a noise limit.
Oh, no.
Okay, just want this.
Thank you.
For the people listening. Other than that, I think that you've captured what we had, and, you know, we had a, we had a lengthy discussion, an hour and a, an hour and a half, which I think was very beneficial. But it just goes to what Mr. Wallen was actually saying, why it's important that we have those kind of committee meetings outside of the meeting here, so we can really dive in and have other individuals who need to be there to get this information. So, thank you for coming together.
Absolutely.
I was just wondering, did you mention the discussion that we had, and you might have, about how do we get people to change their behavior and be more respectful of their neighbors in terms of that education piece?
Yeah, I wrote that into like the greater, like, educating our community. But definitely, I appreciate making sure that that is also captured, because that's a huge part as well. Mr. O'Brian?
Yeah, you were just at a very good detail description. I had asked Corporation Council to look into legislation in terms of loudspeaker and the exhaust, if we can able to legislate that locally here as a state law, or Corporation Council is looking into that, if we can do something local. And also drone as a force responder, if we need legislation for that, if we're going to use the drone as force responders, so that we put some protection to our police department whenever that is used as a force responder. And the same thing also to add, you mentioned format, legislation and format application as we move forward to in this section.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments, Mr. Patrick?
I don't know, I mean, I know I sent late my suggestions based on our meeting on Friday, and I didn't know others did, but can we try to, I mean, I don't know, I guess the next step, we have to continue this discussion, so could we maybe have, if all their council members and Mr. Williamson's comments that he just made, it'd be great to have all those in front of us and to help us prepare for when we do have this discussion.
All right, I'd say I took it into consideration. So these were not all explicitly in my thoughts. It was a capture of the event, and then my reception.
Oh, okay, okay.
And then Mr. O'Brian, I guarantee, again?
Yeah, regarding vehicle traffic law, we'll look under there. There is currently in the code, a section on noisy vehicles that covers a number of situations. And that, so, noisy vehicles is, is looking under 182-4. We can also look that, look at that in conjunction with anything in the vehicle and traffic law at that in conjunction with anything in the vehicle and traffic law, that also deals with loud mufflers, et cetera, for violations of the state vehicle on traffic law. And regarding the issue as to drones on that one, we have to be very careful about that, evasion of privacy, et cetera, because drones have to be used in a very certain span type of manner, and, so, that will require research, but it's, you could be peering into areas that you're not supposed to be peering into, because it's one thing to have cameras on in a public way, if this thing is going into private areas, you must be very, very careful. And also, technology wise, do we have the technology to do that? Do the officers have the ability to capture sound off of that? And also, regarding when they're responding to the scene, do their body cameras pick up those types of, as they're approaching the scene, is it, is it picking up the, the sound in realistic terms, and whether that can also be downloaded to be used in a court proceeding? So those are obviously legal and technical issues that have to be addressed.
And actually, some of those, a couple, the drones specifically, I brought up because I had concerns about what people would be thinking about drones flying over their houses because they're having a party, but Commissioner Devine was here, so we did ask them to concern, you know, to bring information about whether or not that's something that we could do legally. So, and you're right, it does have about the noise in the ordinance already, but we, the modified mufflers was one of them, which is actually in here, but that was, there was that one, and there was one other thing about the cars.
Okay, well, I mean, there may be something in the V and T law, the vehicle and traffic law, that will address that as well, so we can, we can take a look at that.
So for the next meeting, I think it would be helpful to have that, if there's anything within the vehicle and traffic law, to have that information provided for us as well.
Sounds good.
Just really quick, and you like, might have covered this one, but I'm just wondering about roomwork, you know, responding and timing, so Brian's point is different, you know, are all, you know, body cams, are they all, you know, equipped to measure whatever sound decibel, or, or, because right now, I know that, you know, from my understanding.
Are they shaking their head no? So what they told us at the meeting was, there's no, they don't have any decibel meters, right now, it's whether you can hear within fifty feet. So if you have really good hearing, or not so great hearing, so that's what Assistant Chief, right, Antonovich, said that within fifty feet is the guideline right now, if you can hear within fifty feet, then it's, you know.
Just to confirm, it sounds like you guys were addressing some of the cultural celebrations and things like that, and just, you know, just to organize that, just kind of act like that, make sure that, because beating things up to a certain level of discretion and cause, so we can unintentionally perpetuate, you know, some biases, and it's a tough thing to talk about, but you probably just make sure that that's at the front of our minds or whatever this conversation.
And then to that point, I think just trying to evaluate areas in which the code can be responsive to our changing society while still being adhering to like emerging technology and its, and its impact on people's lives, i.e. the drones, but then also how we use technology that's coming in to leverage to really reduce or improve, I'd say, in the numbers, this quality of life for residents, so I think that's why there's a really big emphasis on just people being aware of the impact of their actions, and then also understanding there's no perfect solution, so the thing we kind of started off with was, this issue of noise is not something that's specific, or you need to submit, but I do appreciate how our city is very open and knowledgeable in these types of issues, and seeks to address them head on, so I think with conversations continuing, I think we'll continue to position ourselves to address this one. So unless there are any other questions or comments, Mr. O'Brien?
Yeah, just as a follow-up regarding the vehicle and traffic law, under one eighty-two dash five, and standards are reasonable for noise, our code incorporates by reference a section in the vehicle and traffic law, we'll discuss that in detail next time, that section, so everybody knows what that entails, and the, the one eighty-two dash five mentions that section regarding automobiles, but it also goes through a whole list of criteria, which is but not limited to, so it's, it's the whole, it's, it's broad dealing with that, with that issue, it's included but not limited to, it's a whole different factors, the time of the day, whether it's noise, the duration of noise, so those are all factors that our current ordinance already covers, but we'll take a look at that and work back regarding vehicle and traffic law incorporation, which is good, that it's already, that law is already incorporated by reference into our, our staff or ordinance, so that's good.
Ms. Patrick?
Is the fifty foot that we discussed instead of the decibel, the eighty decibel reading, is that in here, or it is in here, okay.
It's an eighty decibel.
Eighty, no, I know, but basically, it was explained to us that rather than using that, they're using the fifty, a fifty foot measure.
Because it didn't have the device.
Right, but, yeah.
So not, I mean, I think we're going to go to our meeting, other meeting, and really discuss it more, but actually, in our, in our code, it refers to twenty-five feet. What Assistant Chief Antonovich, I think he was talking about the vehicle and traffic, about another ordinance, because in here it says twenty-five, clearly twenty-five. So, that's on page.
No, I got it, I can see that.
All right.
Any other questions or comments, hearing on our. So moving on to the last agenda item, is the appointment of Anthony Judd to the Civil Police Review Board.
Hello, Anthony Judd has shown interest in participating in the Civil Police Review Board, his resume was brought forth by Dean and Carl, brought it forth to the mayor, the mayor did meet with him on Wednesday, August twenty-eighth, and was brought to the city and appointing him to the Civil Police Review Board.
Yeah, so thank you for that, so, yes, okay, so, so Mr., you've probably met him, he's been here several times, maybe, no, he was, because one of the two gentlemen that have been coming here to meetings pretty consistently, and showed an interest, and they actually forwarded their resume and, and this pal mid-year, and Mr. Williams just trying to make sure it got pushed through the process, so there's two of them that actually were interested, and so one of them, the mayor, we met with.
Yes.
And chose Mr. Judd.
Yes.
To be there.
Do you have questions or comments?
How about this?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, there are any items to the call for the safety, hearing on may have motions or hearing.
So.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
I would like to call the Finance Committee to order on the fourth item, the twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five final annual action plan allocation device, Ms. Caro.
Good evening, city council members, I'll bring before you an updated revised version of our two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-five annual action plan. After another review, we had to make some slight adjustments to our plan to make sure that we were aligned with our regulatory caps that we need to adhere to, so I listed them out, we had to lessen our home admin by seven thousand, three hundred, twenty-five dollars and ninety-two cents, we had to increase our Habitat Humanity funding project by seven thousand, one hundred, twenty-seven dollars and fifteen cents, Habitat for Humanity Home is a CODO, and we have to have a minimum of fifteen percent of our allocation go towards CODO, and it's the one home project that had room to still increase, and we moved two CDBG projects, and we categorized them in our NRSI area, which is our neighborhood revitalization strategy area, and those include the Empowerment Center and Boys and Girls Club. We moved them because if they are in the NRSI area, they don't have, there is no cap, so it allowed us to continue the funding with the other items under just regular CDBG, which has a seven point five percent allocation cap. The act today is for city council to accept the new, the revised annual action plan with the amendments indicated.
Questions, comments? Seeing now, we have a motion to move this power.
Same.
All in favor, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is the police department fees and revenue proposal, Assistant Chief, report. So back last year, we are going over the budget, one of the, I can take away from the budget was looking at our fees, some of our fees are outdated, and this is a step that I have taken after the budget into this year to kind of look at it, and here we are today with the police department presenting their fee proposal. Assistant Chief, it's all yours.
Thank you very much. So we're going to start off, there's at least four different areas where I think the fees can be increased, to start with, we will go to the false alarm fees, right now, we'll get into what the extra false alarm fees are in the next slide, but a false alarm is charged after four free false alarms within the city, so if there's, basically, we go to someone's business or residence four different times for a false alarm, for faulty wiring, or the failure to maintain an alarm system, we go there four times for free, and the fifth one, we charge twenty-five dollars, the second one, we charge fifty, third, seventy-five, and one twenty-five, and beyond from there. So in two thousand and twenty-two, we took in a total of thirteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty, and twenty-three, the thirty-six thousand, and so far, year-to-date, we've taken in thirty-five thousand. It's section one twenty-four, is actually, the city code gives us what the persistent false alarm actually is, the yellow is what I propose as a change, since one word goes from the two, from the four to the two, this was last adopted in nineteen ninety-six as well. And the penalties for the offense would stay exactly the same, because the code itself determines what a persistent false alarm actually is, so that the penalties would stay the same. So all in all, if we move the free alarms from four down to two, the city did expect between twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars a year additional revenue. The reason why, as is important that we do this, is people do have the options to get these fixed, so we're not spending all of our time there, most of these police calls involve, all of them should, by protocol, have two officers go, so sometimes it's two cars, sometimes it's one car with two officers, but whenever there's an alarm, it's a higher priority call, and actually, it's like the loud music calls, it's, we take everyone seriously like it's a bird in progress or something serious going on, so we go lights and sirens there, stuff happens, it increases the danger for the officers and other people in the city, so by doing this, hopefully it gets people motivated to get their alarms fixed, and also, if they don't, it would generate more revenue for the city.
Should we ask questions during the presentation? It's up to how we prefer.
Yeah, if we could, that'd be great.
Ask question as we go across the slide.
Okay. So.
Go ahead, please.
My question is, my question is, if you could just go back to the slide we were talking about, you know, the fees, are they, they're low, those fees are low, I'm normally building on the discussion that we had the other evening about the noise complaints.
Yes, ma'am.
So I'm, I'm just wondering if other people feel like those are really low, and should we be increasing them, or are they thinking about increasing them?
So I will say that I dropped the ball, and listen, on other ones, I have recommendations for, I have information from other towns and cities, this one I did not look up, but I charged.
Well, we did look at it, too, because we're actually dropping the amount of free calls from four to two, so there will be more revenue in the back end, so yes, we can increase it, but at the same time, we're expanding.
No, I, I.
Yes, either way, we are still getting in revenue, additional revenue of, on high of twenty-five thousand dollars, and that's our best estimate.
Okay, great.
Go ahead.
So yeah, I would agree to go with Ms. Patrick, I think what she referred to is that, that increasing those fees, I would say increasing the fees as well as, you know, reducing them out of, of free calls, I think that, I guess my question is, now, this really includes like fire alarms at a business.
This is not fire alarms, I know the fire department's working on something else, this is just the false alarms, security alarms.
Okay, okay, okay.
They are, I believe that they are working on something as well.
Oops, sorry.
How successful are we at electing the fees that we currently have?
So I don't, the law department actually does that for us, so I don't know.
I don't know, I'm.
Okay.
You can go back to current, that, this is what we have in previous years, currently.
Yeah, but that doesn't tell me how many calls there were for the income.
So I can get you that as well, our lieutenant on Midnight's, he puts everything together and sends it over to law department, I believe it is, biweekly, and I can have, I can figure out how many times, I guess, oh, I guess, law department actually, what they, what they bill out from there, so I can follow up with the answer to that.
Right, so.
We're looking for a list of the calls?
No, not at all, so in two thousand and twenty-two, let's use that for an example, we know the income was thirteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty, we do not know what the income was generated from, how many calls there were, how many false alarms there were, because we don't, we just don't know the number, so how many false alarms did it take to generate that amount of money in that year? And, and also, did every false alarm actually get paid? Did people actually pay after, when they were billed? So there may have been, like, let's say we billed, I don't know, a hundred or something, and then did all a hundred people pay, or did only seventy-five people pay? So we don't know that data, so it would be helpful, when we see, we see the income, we just don't know what generated the income.
When we were going through this, you had a list of all the calls, snapshot of some of the calls, is that, you can use that very same report to generate previous years, to see, to attach the collection to that?
Yes, so I should be able to go back, I know I have twenty-four and twenty-threes that are previously, I questioned the, why there's such a different number in there, and I believe it was how we provide the data to the law department, and when they actually bill them out, so I think there was a change in process along the way, but I can look to see if I can get a number of how many people were actually billed and how many paid, I can see if we can get a redemption.
What's your, no, sorry.
So I had two points, definitely to Ms. Patrick's point, I would like to see the fees increase, because one of my thoughts is, what is the opportunity cost, and what is the cost of the officers responding to that, and we will go into another, and send throughout the city, but I also want to kind of caution us, I find that right balance, so we need to see what your research provides, because although fees are generating, when you go too high, and then you have to kind of zero out that line, so definitely, it does require a bit of fines.
Absolutely. What, what is, what is the suggestion to raise?
I would like to see what other.
Yeah, I don't have, I don't have a suggestion, but.
I just want to say that when we consider, as we're talking about these fees, these aren't the only fees we're talking about.
No, I know.
So, I want to make sure that, you know, we just aren't like seeing.
Oh, yeah, no, it's a big picture.
Yes, we have to definitely look at the big picture.
So we can come back to this, in terms of the fees.
The next one is a much smaller one, it's a records fee, we currently charge twenty dollars for somebody who asks for a letter of good conduct, or a letter for criminal history to show that they are, that they don't have a criminal history, some people want to provide it to businesses or landlords that are being told, we only use about fifty of these a year, it's not a very common thing, I believe it was two thousand, it was the last time you looked at, and it was twenty dollars back then, so I suggest a forty dollar fee to that, and it's, we'd raise a thousand, two thousand dollars, depending on how many employees we get for the year, but that is a.
Go ahead, please.
So, for, so for number three, when you're asked, talking about the arrest files, et cetera, how far are you looking, I mean, are we just looking at Schenectady? Are we looking in New York State?
I don't have that answer, I will, I can look for you, I believe that is a, all of, all state, I believe, I believe that's all New York State, but.
All of New York State?
I believe so, I could get an answer for that from our records.
And the other, the second part of that is that you say, it says free to authorized agencies, what constitutes an authorized agency, and why do they pay, as well as individual?
I believe that's like another police department, or a, this establishes fees only for the police department, so I believe that would be for FBI, New York State Police, they'll send us records back and forth, and I believe that's, is put in there to look at that, but I, I don't have to, this is.
So just, so to explain on that, just like, say for instance, if you want to hire somebody, and you're, can you get this information as well, can I ask the police department that, if I'm interested in hiring someone?
No, if I want to, well, if we're going to hire somebody, then we have to figure it right, if you want, somebody else has to sign off on it, and you'd have to authorize you to get it.
Okay.
And provide a letter, we, we can't do it without that person's authorization.
In that case, let's say, I'm willing, I want this job, I'm willing to sign it, would you then charge the agency or organization that's going to hire for that record?
So we've never done that before, I don't know if we can do that, but I've never seen that before, this is usually, I guess, for when people travel, also, when they apply for visas, they need one of these, it's a letter that the records does a background check, they submit a letter, and the chief has to sign off on it, and say that what the records are.
Oh, okay.
But.
I have a visa, I don't know, I don't, I didn't know that people needed that kind of stuff, okay.
It's, I guess it possibly depends where you're traveling to.
Okay.
That's it for this section. The next one goes into the parking fines, this is a bigger one, New York State set some limits, there's some parking fines, there's some fees, city council, you guys set many more, and next, this right here is a summary of the top ten items that can be changed, and they're all that had over a hundred and twelve, or over a hundred issued within the last year, so we did a rolling twelve-month average, and I looked at Troy, Albany, and I've literally worked foundation on that as well, but currently, right now, most of the fees are set, at thirty-five dollars, and I believe that the city last looked at them. them, I think they were within 2011, possibly is the last time I see an ordinance change. I don't know if something was added, or if the fees were changed at that time, but there's a lot of them at $35. Troy re-did theirs in 2016, where they increased a lot of them to around $50. They also adopted something that went from, it doubled after two weeks, where right now, currently, we have a doubling after 20 days, and they tripled it after 60 days in 2016. Albany has not looked at theirs in over 20 years, so they're, they're lower than what we're proposing, but the last time again they were updated, it was at minimum 13 years ago, but probably longer than, longer than that, so I put in there the last 12 months, how many, each of those tickets were issued by our parking department, or sometimes our officers, and what it would mean if we were to increase it in yellow, we suggested increase in the blue is what the overall fine would be in the end. And the last column is the impact of what kind of revenue we generated if everything's state council in the next 12 months, for the top. Then there's six or seven others that have under 100, that we would look at as well, but those are the, the top 10. I figured I'd start there.
And those that we can increase, the others we cannot?
Yes, these ones that you can, you can increase, all of these.
Right in the show.
Yeah, the max allowed column is where New York City B and T determines what the maximum you can charge is for different items, what we're able to find. The fire hydrant, actually could not find anything that says what the maximum was, but I know New York City does $115, that's why, now we can go at least to $115.
I just wanted to say, like, I appreciated the breakdown, gave a lot of context, and I would say, as one of the first presentations regarding fee increases, I appreciate your responsiveness to the issue, and then I would say, snapshod this and using this as a template, because definitely, I would call out other municipalities, it helps us understand just where we gauge.
Yeah, exactly, that's why it was on this. Any other question on this slide? No, I'm just, just to kind of reference the impact, if we had this fee at the beginning of this year, we would have seen an impact of 240, $2,000.
Yes, sir, in 12 months rolling, so six months, or nine months of this year, and three months of last year, yes.
So it's a significant revenue increase there for the police department. Go ahead, please.
So I don't know that this is accurate, you know, I just know that they're closely related, and again, as you were mentioning, it's just especially when we're talking about parking tickets, there are, you know, there's studies, national studies, and I haven't, you know, we haven't, I haven't, the city that I look, you just have to be mindful about, like, what type of fees we increase, because we can unintentionally impact certain marginalized communities based on the way that the, their ability to park is, the ways that, you know, some neighborhoods have, you know, no driveways, some, there's, there's different contributing factors to how we can unintentionally impact certain communities more than others, so I just want to highlight that, just to think of something, we should be mindful of that, and we're, and if we're just looking to increase the fees, but it looks like we definitely should do in some areas that, just increasing the fees, you know, there's a greater, it can be a greater impact to the larger community. Do you have a favorite?
Yes, yeah, I got one. Go ahead, please.
I brought that up the other day when we were talking about the noise violations, because the fee increases are suggested quite high, and it was pointed out to me that, again, we're, I forget the exact language, but that we're trying to get people to change their behavior, and so, you know, we might have to increase the fees to a certain extent, because, I don't want to use the word punitive, but, you know, we are trying to be punitive, and we are hoping that people, I, I don't want to put words, but you guys were, were very good in the way that you responded to me about that the other day, because I was talking about, you know, poor kinds of populations, but I got that, I thought, I thought that was a good response to my, to my query.
I think the whole drive is to have this effective January 4th, so we have, we have a couple months to, to do an educational outreach, behavioral, we talked about last week at the, obviously, meeting, to kind of educate people that this is, this is going to happen, so we're not going to, like, pass it next week and then enforce it about a week, January 4th.
So I, first I'll speak to what you just talked about. The difference in this is that you have a choice over how loud you're going to play your music, that's a decision that you make. However, if there's limited parking on your street, then you can only work within those parameters, so I don't know that there are necessarily things that we can equally compare, because I want to have a loud party, I'm going to turn it up, whether you like it or not, but if there's limited parking, then I'm, I'm, you know, I have to work within those parameters, so I'm not sure if that's, that's a comparison that, that I would really make in terms of people's ability to pay, because you made a decision, or you don't really have any place else to park. So there's that, the other thing I wanted to know is, will this impact it, and should we take a look at it? Some of our parking signs are a little bit outdated, and they were put up when people were working at GE, and they worked these interesting hours, and so you couldn't park at a certain time on one side of the street versus the other side of the street. So if we're talking about changing the fees for parking, should we also be looking to make sure that how we currently have our signage makes sense for how people work today? I think that's something we should, because now, because some people have alternate parking, they don't even pay attention to it. I see parking on both sides of the street on a regular basis, because the signs just really don't make sense, because people don't work like they did for those hours when GE was like the main employer in the city of Schenectady. So I think we would have to take that, I know that that's going to take a lot, because if we have to pay for signs, do a study, do all of those things, however, those are things that we should also be taking a look at.
Well, not only people who don't, who work, some people who don't work don't even go on the pay, they move their cars, so it's, it's a two-way, you know, into air, that people just need to comply, you know, just like the noise nuisance, people playing loud music. You're going to increase the fee, you come into compliance, you're going to have to pay the violation. Same thing, we need, you know, to play on the street and get people to comply with regulation. You park on the wrong side, you're going to get ticketed. They're parking, they're parking all over the place.
So does our parking make sense, though, that we have to take a look, this makes sense for how we live now?
Yeah, what we'll need to do is make sure that we have updated signs across the city, if we're going to enforce this, the signs need to be placed across updated sign, new signs, and put that in place, so people are aware that parking on either side is within a given date's violation. Go ahead, please.
So I appreciate our present for the deal for that distinction, because, you know, definitely, one is more, I think that when you're talking about parking fees, and the reason why they have these, these national studies is because unintentionally, I would say, in some places, and certainly by design in other places, you start to kind of take advantage of the most marginalized people in your community, and start to increase fees based on, based on the fact that there is, and not, not just a case of, of limited parking, but there's also the enforcement strategies, which is more, you know, would be more up to the police department as well, to kind of consider those things, it's just we have to keep that in front of our, in front of our mind, because if not, we can have really good policies that make a lot of sense, increase our revenue, but we can be doing it off the backs of, of one population in the city, and that's what we just always have to ask ourselves to make questions for doing any of these things, right? Because if they, if they, if we're increasing the fee, and we're going to, you know, bring in another $200,000, but 80 to 90% of that $200,000 is coming from, you know, you know, two or three neighborhoods that just happen to be the neighborhoods that, that design is far more likely for someone to be out of compliance with, or with the department, and that's something that we just have to consider.
You don't have the data for that? Do you have the data?
So, so what I, what I was saying, so what I said, in the beginning of what my statement was, I was talking, referring to more to national trends, and the first thing I said was, I haven't looked at the data within our city. It's something to be mindful of, and pay attention, because if we increase this, without looking at the data, we can unintentionally perpetuate that outcome. So it's been good, so I wasn't making a statement that what's happening, I'm saying that if we're changing something, then we need to be mindful of that, or we won't be being able to.
Well, we have to, we have to initially encourage the police to do, you know, across the board, and no, no community or no neighborhood should be targeted, but apply, apply it across the entire city when they're doing enforcement, or when they're applying out tickets.
Well, I was just going to say, I mean, you guys probably have data of my neighborhood in terms of breakdown of these tickets.
I've never seen it, but I've been asking, do you know, is that possible through the, through software?
Yeah.
So it is, it's possible for us to send that, so.
So that's somebody who has gotten tickets, I mean.
Can you, can you make it, or provide that to the council, please?
So looking for a breakdown of tickets per, does it go by zone, or does it go by area, do you think?
No, it's not a zone, like we consider the neighborhood zone, it might be a zone, but there's no correlation between that zone and in our system, and, uh, compared to what there is in the city. You know, we enforce where the signs are valid, so, so, so to the point of, you know, where to enforce, we enforce where we can enforce. There are neighborhoods that there is no signage, but it makes sense, because some of the streets are wider, the neighborhood, the driveways are longer, so a lot of this enforcement is, is not necessarily revenue generating, but it's, it's a safety aspect, too. You have neighborhoods that have narrow streets, and you have both-side parking, you can't get emergency personnel down there, and oftentimes, the signs indicate the season, right? So there's more prohibitions during certain seasons for the obvious reasons, if it's snowfall. Some, some of the ones that I know that are kind of different, there'll be no parking this side from 1:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m. The reason is, because the street sweepers would come down.
Can you just come on up?
Oh, yeah, that's good.
But the camera's focusing.
Yeah, he turned to me, but. You're providing a lot of information.
So some of the, some of the signs that we might not have a comprehensive understanding to, at least at face down, and due several legitimate purpose, the example I was saying before, is no standing this side 1:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m., you know, you think, what is that about? But it's, it's for street, street sweeping, so obviously, it just makes more sense to have that. But that's it, you know, again, we, we ticket where we can and enforce where we can, and I don't know why they decided to put things in certain areas, you know, maybe it's for a broader discussion, you know, can we use more enforcement, can, you know, we have more or less restrictions, to your point, I don't know, you know, that's.
Go ahead, please.
I think that some, I mean, I, you know, I mean, I think about some of the streets, like Brandywine or, you know, Brooklyn, I mean, parking's crazy, and it's really difficult, so I think related to the previous discussion about traffic control and speeding, I mean, I think some of those things have, must come into the, into consideration as well, in terms of where the signage is, and I, I can think, you know, just driving around the city and having a park in a lot of different areas, where it might be time, in a lot of areas, it's alternate side based on the days of the week, when they Wednesday, Friday, versus, you know, Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday. It's, you know, I'm, I think that maybe it has to do with traffic, what's the word?
Congestion.
The numbers of cars, the congestion, congestion on the streets as well.
So there is that, the parking enforcement officers drive around, obviously, they'll make different zones that they all go to, and they switch them up daily or regularly, and also during the day, if somebody calls in with a parking complaint during the day, they're dispatched automatically, so if somebody calls in and says that there's parking multiple cars here, we had four civilians, now we're down to two, so we're hopefully getting them back up, they will drive around, and they'll go right there to the ticket right then and there, so that's, besides their normal patrol, they, they do respond to areas where people call and complain during the day. Go ahead.
Quick question. So I imagine it's definitely Chief Clifford's call, would we be able to, if interested, shadow around that perspective, job, like, the ticketing?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, absolutely, yep. Right now, they were, you know, days Monday through Friday, and if there's somebody that's interested, absolutely.
Say they ride a bike?
Yeah, they ride a bike, yeah, just.
They ride a bike?
Yes, some do.
So we have the one officer being the rights of bike downtown, and they, they're also in a car that's parked, park enforcement as well.
I'll do the bike, I'll use the electric bike.
Yeah, absolutely, we actually have a luxury for park enforcement, we do.
So are you saying that we can get a breakdown by neighborhood?
I suspect we can, yeah, I don't think there's anything to do with that. The only thing that may be labor intensive, depending on how they may have to run, we may have to run down by street, right, instead of just by neighborhood. I love it, I'm sure it is, yeah.
If we want that, how far back do we want to go?
I would say six months, okay, because it's going to take a lot of time, it's going to be taken up to do that, six months, three months?
Six months.
I think. I think you could do a year.
You could do a year?
It would be a lot of work, an entire year, about $6,000.
We want to use the same dataset that we're using for projections, if that makes sense.
You want to do the same?
This is 83123 to 91 of 24 is what that dataset said.
Let's do, let's do the same report, this is one we can move forward, go ahead, please.
So just because, it's important that we have clarity around these issues, I think that, like, so, and I appreciate, like, I don't know exactly why they, you know, put signs in places, and I'm sure that, well, I would give the benefit of the doubt to say that when some of the signs and regulations were put in place, that they were done so in good faith, I definitely would assume that our law enforcement officers are acting in good faith when issuing, you know, tickets, so on and so forth. So that, that idea is not in opposition to us kind of looking at the impact of what we're, of what that enforcement looks like, and just to be aware of how these things can perpetuate certain inequities throughout society, and, and we're not Schenectady, we're not, you know, and that, that includes us, so I'll, again, so the point I'm making is that there's no intention around, I'm not assigning any intention to this, but what I'm saying is that if we're not intentional about taking those measurements, and kind of really asking ourselves the hard questions that no one lets us talk about, and we mean a lot of time in his life, then we end up, you know, perpetuating something, so I just want to be, I really clear about that, but I appreciate the work you're doing, and the tricks, thanks.
Any other question on this slide?
The next one is some of our annual control fees, while some of these are not through the police department, it's the clerk's office, but it's, we work very closely together in these, so I'm just including them in here in the presentation. Currently, right now, the city is charging $20.50 for a dog license if they're altered, $13.50 if they're unaltered, and then it goes down if you're senior or, at least a five-year old. The surrounding towns and city, we had this Una is $20, $30, Albany was 16 to 23, and then Troy is 15 to 20. The R section is 114, and it's a little complicated as far as there's multiple layers, multiple things that go into what the dog license fee is, so I have it broken down here, crossed out the dollar value, and put the, the new dollar value that's recommended in here. The next slide will show you kind of what the bottom line is, if this makes sense, so that the, the new fee recommendation would be $7.50 increase on the altered, $7.50 on the unaltered, and then $3.250 for the senior citizens, and this would increase revenue between $8,000 and $10,000 per year, it depends on if somebody ordered, pays for a one-year, two-year, or multi-year license, so it could fluctuate a little bit, but.
So Ms. Michael, is this aligned with your cost for service?
It does.
It does?
Yes. So who gets those fees? With, with this actual, it goes to the city?
Clerk's office, is that correct?
It gets deposited into the general fund.
Well, you take it, your office take it?
We take it, and it gets deposited into the general fund.
Same, especially when animal licenses wouldn't, go to, shouldn't, go to the, the police, due to affect the rules of enforcement, that, was that, that, they always written as, like, directed to the clerk's office, but it's kind of like enforced by the police department? Sam, you can, you can explain more about, about enforcement, sorry.
Oh, we have, yeah, the animal control officers, when they do go out, or they buy an unlicensed animal, you know, the, the dog is then taken to Mohawk Hudson, in the main society, there's a redemption fee called, and also then they have to license their pet. the dog is then taken to Mohawk Hudson in main society, there's a redemption fee called, and also then they have to license their pet. That's the police component.
But they come to your office to do the licensing.
Yes, to my office, to do all that.
Anyway, that's like different, all the towns, the things that I saw went to the clerk's office, actually for the fees.
Just a question, and Mr. Brian, I appreciate your background also, if needed, could we discuss potentially expanding this senior citizen category to include medically qualified positions in which someone needs to service an animal? And then also potentially their service members, where like it's improvement to make a system there, integration back into society?
I think that's already in the code, that those areas are already exempt. And I'm looking ahead at the next slide, and I'm wondering about the exemptions that are being taken away.
So there is, it is in the code, I was looking to remove it, actually.
Yeah, they're removing it, that's, it's already in the code right now.
Ag and markets law says that municipality may exempt an animal, but then the American Disability Act has changed it, so you cannot ask for documentation, you can only ask two questions. And we're getting customers coming in refusing to provide answers, provide documentation, just making it so much more difficult.
The Americans with Disabilities Act has very limited regulations, as the city clerk has pointed out, what sort of questions you can ask, and they're very limited scope.
Two questions.
Per the federal regs, so it's what the council wants to do, whether they want to, you know, what I'm seeing up there is five is being deleted, that's a policy decision for you all to make that policy decision, if you want to continue with the exemptions or not.
Sam, what is your recommendation?
My recommendation was removing it.
What do you think?
Our ordinance covers every, like, service animal, therapy animal, everything, like, everything. But one, we don't need, two, under Ag and Markets, and two, under ADA, they say service animals. And there's a differentiation between service and therapy, but we can't really differentiate based on the two questions.
Go ahead, please.
I feel that service, I like the exemption for veterans, for service animals, therapy dogs. Well, obviously, detection, I mean, those wouldn't be charged, what's that? It says detection, so that must be like a police animal that's looking for drugs or something like that. I mean, I don't know why we wouldn't exempt that, that's like an employee of the city, right?
Yes, if they lived in the city, yes, if they were a city employee that had the police, they would have to register the dog. They paid $40, the $28.
We haven't had one in years in the city because the animal with the police department stay with whoever the train rides.
Right, right.
So then it wouldn't have been a situation.
Right, no, I get that, but I just think those animals should be exempt, remain exempt.
From what I got from Ms. Marick, it wasn't like any bias, it was just an inability to evaluate this. So if that's causing administrative burden, then I can be responsive to her offices.
As an alternative, I believe there are funds available, $10 worth, we'd get funds, couldn't pay the, couldn't pay the fee, so if there was a hardship, I don't know how many exemptions are on the sheets that I saw, I think there was only like six or seven for a certain amount of months when I looked at the data. So if there was, if those people couldn't, or if you did decide to get rid of it, and there was somebody needed, there are funds available for them to pay for.
So it doesn't stop you from giving exemption, you still have the authority to give exemption?
If we remove it, it'll stop.
Removing it, then the exemption, yeah.
There are exemptions, right?
Yeah.
I would say let's put this on hold and go through the process of the public hearing, then we can say, because the consensus table is like, we should keep that. And I think we should, we should keep it, the exemption, unless we define it a little bit as to what, what is exempt?
I think the clerk's saying would be, like, make my position, no, hearing her response, and if there's a pot of money that Ms. Michael can direct those individuals to, I think it captures it, it's a wonder.
Okay, all right. Do we need to put some sort of exemption?
Well, it all depends on the, if, okay, we'll talk, you know.
Yes, go ahead, please.
We've been talking about parking fees and now dog fees, so they're both required amendments to the city code, also require public hearings. Regarding these two public hearings, I would recommend since they're generating money for the city, which will have an impact on the budget, perhaps you would want to do these hearings at the same night you're doing the budget. You don't have to, but it's dealing with revenue items that as you go through the rest of October, you may use as you're making your projections and you're creating your budget, and then after you have that public hearing, then you have the budget adopted, and then you have the ordinances that need to be changed to conform with the amounts of fees that you increase this way. All one pro, I'm just throwing that out for you all to consider, that you would have the public hearing on that same night, because it's dealing with fees, which will, as you saw, will have an impact on the budget. So that way, it's in total, and then the budget is dealt with, and then depending on how you work on the budget, you can amend the ordinance to conform with the budget.
So do we need two public hearings?
You would need two public hearings, the reason being is because you're dealing.
Sorry, there's five, I think, for if you were to go through, change everything, you want?
I think, because I think they weren't quite certain about.
Okay.
About what?
I think they weren't quite certain about the first part of the hearing, the first part, I'm just focusing on the parking and now the dog fees.
Yeah, it's still parking, it's not parking only, it's overall fees.
And then, I think if, I think if false alarm fees, I think you need more information regarding the false alarm fees, so I don't know if that's ready for a public hearing, it may need it, and whether that's going to have a significant amount of revenue, I don't know. But, I mean, you can always, you can call for public hearings on all those items and then deal with that before the next committee cycle. And then, you know, mark everything up, and then it will be ready for the public hearing and then draft ordinance.
I think that's what the idea is, yes.
Going on the same night for the, for the.
So five public hearings?
There was the false alarm fees, if you were to increase, if you were to, if you were to change what the false alarm definition was, and if you're going to change the false alarm fees structure, and then there was the parking fines, the records. And the end record fees.
Oh, the records also, okay. Any other, was the last slide?
Yep, it's two more quick ones.
So, Ms. Marick, I want to make my point about exemptions, I'm in agreement with Ms. Michael that they should be taken away, because right now, people don't have to answer any questions.
No, that's okay, I was, yeah, I'm fine with that. I was thinking about, you know, but then there is a pot of money that can be used, so how individual in those situations, I'm fine, yeah.
And so, so we're talking about five public hearings, how did I just be clear? So five plus.
What you may want to do is the bigger items are the dog license fees and the parking fees. The parking fees that you saw would generate a lot of revenue if those fees were to go through. So perhaps we just have the parking fees on the same night as the budget hearing, because that's probably the most significant amount of money that I've saw.
I recommend that we do all at the same time and get it over with, I mean, a small, a small public hearing, maybe a few people.
Yeah, my bigger concern is like people know what they're going to be about, there's so many, because it can, that's a lot, that's a lot. So. Does the next slide tell us what the total amount of money is?
Can you scroll, please?
Eight to 10,000 a year for the dog license, depending on the year, depending on if they're one, two, or three year renewal cycles.
So we could still have the public hearing implemented without, I mean, after the budget seems.
Yeah, this, yes, we're gonna pass it, and it's gonna take, in fact, January 4th. So we have enough of time to send the PA out there and let people know that, hey, this is what's gonna happen. But ask Michelle to put it on the website, so people know that January 4th, these changes are coming into place.
Because that's not a huge budget impact.
No, it's not a huge, but it's something that we need to address, these small little things, right?
Next, dude.
Next.
This is, this is a very quick one, we do have grant money, and we also have money in the capital, you guys provide us with capital funding in the past, so we are looking to do a new county facility in the city, and when we do do that, there will be options for more debt or revenue that may or may not require assistance from you guys in helping us do that. But right now, if we get a new facility, we can look to at least counties based out of municipalities, we're having trouble post trainings, there's a lot that we'd like to do, that's, say, we'll another hour or something, so we'll do that. And then look into the countywide agreement, instead of having just the city be involved, there's other people that would like to be part of our agreement, but they're more or less locked out of the agreement, so possibly we could look to expand it countywide with that. And the last one is, I know that the council, the mayor, the option to look at kiosk rates and change those, they were last changed in 2020, and I recommend at some point, a group looks at those fees to see if they're still aligned with what they should be.
Is that an engineer, is that an engineer thing?
Yes, so, wait, yes, engineering, engineering helps set the initial fees, so I don't know, I don't know how the initial fee structure was set. I have the initial fee, I have what they are today, they haven't changed since 2020, but something to think about looking at and seeing if they should be updated.
And we, whenever we update parking, we have to coordinate.
We'll get to you. Okay, that's the last slide?
That's it.
That's it, any other questions? If we were to move forward with this, we need to call for a public hearing, and I think it's like three public hearings, because we're not doing with parking rates, because that would have followed the engineering, and we're not touching on that, and animal control. Is that correct? So we need to call for public hearing for false alarm, public hearing for parking fines, we're not doing with parking permits, because we don't have the rates, and animal control fees, three public hearings.
And the records?
On the record.
Any others, records?
Oh, yeah, sorry, your record, it's not, records.
False alarms, records, animal.
Go ahead, Ms. Thomas.
I thought we were waiting for the feedback of other municipalities for the false alarms.
I have written down, I'm gonna come back, I'm gonna email out what the bills were versus what was paid, and what other municipalities are charging for their false alarm fees, so that's my one takeaway. My other takeaway is the one-year same data set, there of zones for parking.
Yes, and any other information we need from Assistant, I think that's what we're asking. So we need to call for public hearing for records, call for public hearing for the alarm, false alarm, we need to call for public hearing on parking fines, and we need to call for public hearing on animal control fees. Go ahead, please.
Craig and Barbara, can't call for public hearing if we're still looking at adjusting language, right?
No, we're not adjusting the language, we're just asking for backup.
False alarm, I was looking for more context to increase the rates, but we're trying to identify what rates. And getting a break.
So we can hold off on that one, the false alarm.
Right, so it's records?
So what I will do, I will proceed to call for public hearing for the records, October 15th, I have a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So we'll skip the false alarm and wait on the backup documents. A call for public hearing on the parking fines for October 15th.
We're gonna wait for that, too, and then wait for the information that we talked about.
Well, that, we have the backup, you're just gonna spread it out for us in more detail, and we have that before the 15th. So this is calling, accepting the public hearing, we have almost a month to get that information.
You have a, you have another committee meeting?
Yes, we do.
We have one?
We still have a committee meeting.
I have a committee meeting.
So you can pass maybe the final version that evening, and still be in time for the public hearing?
We still have time.
Still going back to the false alarms, trying to leverage our time now, do we call it? And then, in between then, we still have time to adjust it?
Yeah, that's exactly, yeah, because we still have almost a month to get that information, and I'm pretty sure we get that in a week or two from PD, and that will give us enough time to kind of like, two weeks of, to kind of like, review it internally between ourselves, and then the public hearing is on the 15th. Let's listen to the public, we came back, come back to the table, and we can like iron it out and move forward.
So I, so are you saying that you think that we should have the public hearing on the 15th for the false alarms? Were you asking that?
In terms of timing, yes.
Is that your question?
My question was, if we're doing that in similar contexts with like another area, I just wanted to make a note, I very much want to increase the rates for the false alarms, they just identify what rates they're on. So we're trying to like hedge time.
We will, we're the, we're the public hearing notice, they're calling for an increase in the public amendment of that particular part of the code, calling for an increase in the fine amounts, so that would be what the public will be on notice for, then the legislation will follow.
And then when we look at the other municipality, we'll come back, with the council, I'm sure we'll go to council, have Assistant and Chief Chair for the council, other municipalities, really, they have for false alarm. Okay. So we did go through the call, public hearing for the records, so we can proceed to call for a public hearing on the false alarm fee for October 15th.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
And then we'll call for a public hearing on October the 15th for parking fine fees. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
And then we'll call for a public hearing on the animal control fee, October 15th.
So moved.
Again, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We'll get to work and we'll provide all the information that is needed.
The hand waving in the air back there.
Where do we move the parking unit meeting?
No, we'll have a meeting a few regards to the PS, unless you're ready to go, no, I'm just kidding. Yeah, we'll go provide all the information that was asked for the council, so that we can proceed with this more timely. The next item. Review collecting feedback from city residents on our CDVGs, like CV funding to prevent, prepare for, and respond to coronavirus projects. The public hearing was held on the 9th.
I beg pardon?
Are there any questions?
There were no speakers.
There were no speakers. Are there any questions, comments on this? We need to, we need to move, so I have a motion to move this resolution.
So.
Can I have a second?
Closing out this matter, it would be a motion to closing out the public hearing, with then there was no comments, and then the report would go forward to the.
Could I have a second?
Agency that's.
Yes, I was just beginning to hear what the motion is.
Yeah, it would be a motion to close out the public hearing and to, you know, send the report to the federal agency responsible for this funding.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any other business or finance, motion to adjourn? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to call to order city development planning, there are 10 items out of the agenda, and I would like to add a couple more ceremony resolutions, just so you're aware, Mr. Wallace here. So the first item is the award bid contract for the city hall ventilation replacement.
So the first award bidding contract we have is for, like it says, city hall ventilation replacement. There are two bids for this, one is an electrical, one is mechanical, we did the electrical several weeks ago. Mechanical, we didn't get a bid, we did some labeling, we did come back out, put out a bid and received a low bid from R and B Mechanical. The second bid was considerably higher from Hecker, we did talk with. We did talk with R and B Mechanical, we have done a lot of work with R and B Mechanical, and they are confident in their number, so we are confident in them, we're recommending them forward.
Any questions, concerns?
Tom, move this.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Item number two, award bidding contract for the Watch Street and Carriage Street Park improvements to car construction. Mr. Wallen?
This is a, we're calling it a Watch Street Safety Project. It's a project, we've been working with the members of the Congressional Gates of Heaven Cemetery Committee. Because of the unique configuration of Watch Street, the fence has been hit multiple times over the course of the history of the cemetery. They've asked the city to try to mitigate that. So what we have is we've designed a guide rail system with chevrons, we're looking to possibly install a couple of solar powered light up chevrons, because a lot of these do happen at night, where it is a geometry that we're not looking to have, very unique in the area. And this also have a modified driveway, and then we're also working with the Carriage Street Park and trying to work with the people there to pick away at their master plan a little bit at a time. This will extend their sidewalk to the basketball court, a little connection, and then pour some pads, so that they can install some benches around the area.
That's great. Any questions, concerns?
Second.
All those in favor? And item number three, excuse me, award bidding contract to connect the fire station number one HVAC and generator upgrades?
So similar to the city hall ventilation, this was the GC portion of a four bid Wixlaw project. We already awarded three, the mechanical, the electrical, and the plumbing. We did have a hard time finding a GC. We were able to call a couple of people, get them to bid. The low bid is MJG Construction. We have not worked with them, they are relatively local, a Boston spot, we did call, we have references, they have worked with the county, and they have worked with a couple of the some other main contractors on the project, which is how they were called and referenced. So with all that said, we were comfortable that they understand the job, and we were working with the other groups that are.
They're two minutes significantly lower than.
This, this work is for the GC on this particular job is not, two, two ways, it's a lot of repairing ceiling tiles and penetrations and things. The majority of the work, I mean, if you were to look at, you had all the bids in front of you, the HVAC work is actually $1.3 million. That's the GC, because that's the bulk of the work. I don't even know if that plumbing component is small, the electric component is small, GC's small, it's really the HVAC job, which is why we're having a hard time going. And I would also think that because the contractors know that this was the third bite at the apple, that they probably, you know, increased a little bit, knowing that the city was in a venture, and this contractor possibly not as much. But like I say, we have faith in our references and the people that we talk to, and we're looking for the work.
Thank you. Questions, comments?
Tom, move this.
Second. All's in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wallen. So the next one is just, is a ceremonial resolution recognizing Breast Cancer Month, which is October, something we generally try to do every year. Entertained motion?
Second.
All's in favor? And the next ceremonial resolution, we all received an email from business and professional women, asking for, actually, they ask for proclamation, but we do resolutions, so putting forth the new resolution for the woman who's being honored this year, the Woman of the Year. What's her name, Jennifer Hendricks-Fall. So, entertained motion?
Second.
All's in favor? Item number six is a reminder of the ceremony naming of a portion of Barrett Street from here on Street to the intersection of South Avenue to Marlin Hill Way, there was a public hearing held on, oh, excuse me, the public hearing will be held on 9/23. Mr. Lou Verne?
No, that's all right, thank you. Just a reminder, public hearing is next Monday, 7:00 P.M.
Okay, thank you. And I would like to ask the councils and delegates to forward a couple more resolutions that just actually came forward, one of them, if you read yesterday's paper, there's a young man who currently resides in our city, James J.K. Thomas, who has been inducted into the Hall of Fame as we speak. So wanted to be able to recognize him with the ceremonial resolution.
So who?
Second.
All's in favor? And then additionally, also, this weekend, I was, someone reached out to me, September is Suicide Prevention Month, but for whatever reason, they're not having their walk until October 6th. So called and wanted to, it is their 10-year anniversary of their walk in the city of Skeneck Bay. So, and this would actually be presented at the walk. So, and I'm just asking for a motion on this resolution.
Second.
All's in favor? Thank you.
Madam President, since you're adding here, I think we all missed Hispanic Heritage Month. It's celebrated on September 15th, October 25th. So I would like to ask that we add that also.
And you'll reach out to somebody in the public, having that issue?
Since we're adding, you know, let's not leave anybody out. So I would like to ask for a CR for Hispanic Heritage Month. Second.
All's in favor? Okay. The remainder of the items are an executive session for property sales. So entertain a motion to go to the executive session?
Second.
All's in favor? We're in executive session, members of the public will have to leave.